Good evening, everybody. It is Monday, June 28, 2021, and I'm going to call the Prescott Regular City Council Meeting to order. Take roll call. Pat?
Here.
Dar?
Here.
Rob?
Here.
Marine?
Here.
Bailey?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Let's all stand and say a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That felt good.
It's all together.
It wasn't delayed on the phone and stuff. Next item on the agenda is public comments. Anyone in the audience that'd like to speak to the council on anything on the agenda? Now is the time to step forward, state your name and your address. If it's not on the agenda, you'll have to wait until the end of the meeting to speak. Yep. Anybody?
I'm going to bring up something. So there was some altercations, I think, this weekend at Scabs' place. And there was obviously a large fight that broke out in front of Scabs on Saturday night. And we believe that it involved more than one individual. And we did receive an incident report from officers involved. I actually saw a video of a fight in front of Scabs. And at no point did anybody in front of Scabs or the bartender at Scabs call police. And I think we need to have some detailed discussions tonight. Obviously, we are approving liquor licenses for all of the establishments in the city.
Just three.
Oh, excuse me, three. And one of those establishments is Scabs. We met with all of the establishments about a little over five and a half weeks ago, six weeks ago, and we had a very lengthy discussion with the establishments, with the servers, with a representative, or shall I say, an inspector from the ATF for the state of Wisconsin. And we had a group discussion about what we could do to decrease fighting in front of the bars, in particular at bar close. In my opinion, all but one establishment was responsive to recommendations, except for Scabs. And now we are at a point tonight where we are approving their liquor license. So I just want to have a discussion with council members in regards to whether or not the approval of their liquor license in particular should be taken in place tonight, or should it be possibly suspended until we see some further action from the establishment.
All right. Thank you for public comment. Anybody else have a public comment?
In response to Dar, I had a chance to have a discussion with Al Schickling yesterday. It's his condition, his feeling that the people that were fighting were not even in his establishment. They came down from down the street, and then the altercation began there. The doors for his place were already shut. And unfortunately, there has been a loss of trust between these business owners and our police department.
Can you explain why?
This is public comment. We're going to, we'll cover this when we go to their liquor licenses.
Okay, thank you.
Still public comment. Any other public comments? All right. If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which includes two items, regular city council meeting minutes of June 14 and the public worst committee meeting minutes of June 17.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
I have one comment.
Yes, sir.
On the minutes, the regular city council minutes, the, it is referred to the proposal for a pumper tanker for the Prescott Fire Department. And while the specs call up for a pump on it, it is not what one would think about in the fire service as a pumper. It is more of a snorkel pump to fill that tanker. It's not designed to give you pressure hose feed for firefighting. It's...
Could it be used for the other things that are in the agreement that we, to do the ice rinks and the other things that are in our agreement?
I believe that by city council action a number of years ago, the fire department was precluded from using the tankers for filling ice rinks in the city of Prescott.
Are you, are you asking for an edit? Is it not a pumper tanker, or do we need to edit the minutes?
It's, it's basically a tanker with a snorkel.
Okay.
It does have a pump on it, but it's not your standard pumper pump.
Yeah.
It can't handle like two, two and a half inch hoses.
Yeah.
They probably have a couple inch and a halves on it.
And they only have a pump.
Tanker with a pump hose reel. So it's a hose reel is different than the actual major pumper. Just FYI. I think that's what Tom was referring to.
It's...
Since we're both on the fire department, I think.
Okay, yeah.
Pretty much. All right. So motion made second, approve the consent agenda item and the two items listed. Is there any other discussion on the motion?
With those changes?
Yeah. But that clarification, we'll call it.
Okay.
If no other objections or discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Standing committees, we've got finance committee. We're going to discuss the pre-sale report for financing TID number five debt. We have Sean Lentz here from Heller's to present that. Is that what you want?
Yep. And use the big one, not the one that's in your packet.
This one's got a little more detail.
It's the amended one.
Amended one, all right.
The one Jane couldn't read, so she couldn't get it very large.
Hey.
Some reason after two dollars, it's very large.
It happens. All right, Sean, stop. Does he have to sit here? Where do you want him?
If he can go, there's a microphone in there.
Microphone, yes, okay.
All right. Good evening, mayor and council. So as the mayor mentioned, we've got the pre-sale report for tax increment district number five financing, and it combines two things. One is the recently done land purchase. You did a short-term note just so whenever the closing was going to be, you got the money, boom, done, and had that all set up. And then secondly, we had been talking with the city for some time about a refinancing of the 2010 debt. The reason we've waited on it is there was some thought if we didn't move ahead with the property purchase, there may be enough cash in the TID just to pay that off in full. But with the decision to move ahead, the cash flow will, it makes more sense to refinance it, keep it, pay it back over the same term with just lower interest rates. So what we've done in the pre-sale report, and if you'll go to exhibit number one, a couple pages back, is we've put together a repayment schedule for the land purchase. And if, are these in color? You didn't do it in color. Thank you, Jane. In green. And then in blue on the right side, upper right corner, is the refinancing of the 2010 note, which some of you may recall, that was the original land purchase for TID number five. So that's the last couple of years of that purchase. And the green is the, the new land purchase. Put all together is an issue of a little less than 4.5 million, and it'll be paid back starting next year through 2030. Council members will remember that you did an extension to the tax increment district to allow it for three additional years, and you went through that process. So we can go out to 2030. This issue will be non-callable until 2027. But starting in 2027, if there's sufficient funds in the TID five fund, we could pay it early, and pay it off early. So a couple of things related to the debt. If you go to exhibit two, the intention is to use, as we've talked with you on previous meetings, tax increment district number five revenues to pay 100, well, yeah, 100% of this debt back. This chart, we are pledging the general obligation pledge of the city, so we can get the lowest interest rate. So what that pledge is, is the full faith and credit, your ability to levy a tax. Our intention, though, is to abate that tax with the, the tax increment revenues, so you won't have to levy it. The state does limit how much GO debt, though, the city can issue. Right now, the red line, you're a little bit more than 20 million is your limit as a city, and you'll have approximately 12 or so outstanding with this issue. So that 8 million plus is about what you've got remaining in borrowing capacity. And you're paying your debt back pretty rapidly, so that'll build back up. And we're very conservative with this red line. Likely, here in Prescott, this is going to be going this way as the city continues to grow. Okay? If you go over to exhibit three, as I had mentioned, a portion of the issue is refunding the original land purchase for tax increment district number five. And there's five years left on this, 22 through 26. The interest rates on that debt issued back in 2010 are four and a half to five and a quarter percent interest rate. The rates on the right side of the page is the portion of the new issue that would refinance that 2010 issue. As you can see, interest rates are quite a bit lower right now than they were back in two. Those are good rates back in 2010.
Yeah.
But the market's changed a lot. So as we talked with Beth and Jane, it made some sense, again, since we weren't going to pay this off early, likely because we're adding that additional land purchase to costs that are charged to the TID five fund, we're estimating somewhere around 49,000 in savings by paying them back at the lower interest rate, but still paying it back over the same term. We're not extending the term, still paying back over the same term. Okay? And then finally, if you go to exhibit four, this is an exhibit that I have discussed with the council when we talked about the extension of TID number five for three additional years. And then as we've discussed, different options about the land purchase. This is a cash flow for all of TID number five. And on the left side is the revenues that we're projecting to generate from the TID. We've projected forward based on the current taxable value out in TID number five. We haven't added anything other than, I think, is it Foley that was being completed?
Correct.
And we expect that'll add a couple more million as of January 1, 21 values. But beyond that, we're not adding any additional value that could potentially occur in the TID if additional buildings went up in the district. And then on the middle to the right side of the page is the expenditures. So existing debt, the debt we're talking about tonight. And then also, the general fund is owed about $1 million from TID number five, and we've got a repayment schedule for that, starting this year, about 160,000 will come from the TID fund, back to the general fund each year. We want to make sure that gets repaid with interest. So where I would direct the council's attention is the column on the far right. And here's where, the way we've set up the repayment of all the city's debt that's charged to TID five, is we're not going right to the dollar. You know, we want to have some cushion in case the values in the TID change, which, you know, can happen from year to year, depending on what the assessors do on the property. But we're also trying to get this debt paid back as rapidly as we can. And that's where I'm estimating, as we get out to the end of 2027 into end of 2028, if this cash flow ends up being what reality is for TID five, we'll probably have enough money at that point set aside that we could prepay the debt, not have to go, this debt we're talking about tonight, not have to pay it all the way to 2030, and that would allow us to close the district early if, if again, that happened. And we'd, in that instance, the three-year extension that the council did would only be one, you'd only have to use one year of it. But we'll, we'll update you guys every year on this. For tonight, it's just locking in fixed interest rates on the refinancing of both the land purchase debt and the original land purchase debt. So tonight, we were just looking to answer any questions that the council had, get the process started. At the second meeting in July, we would come back with competitive proposals, and then you'd have a firm proposal to react to at that point. In between, we'll work with staff on getting all the documentation together, update the city's bond rating. You have a very good AA3 bond rating right now. I would expect we're going to be right in that range going forward. This is a lot of positive, positive situations for the city. But again, tonight, we just wanted to be here to answer any questions and get the process moving forward.
I have one. So if we, I know we asked for our three-year extension.
If we pay that off early, there's no penalty for not going out the whole three years?
Correct. Yep. Both on your extension, you got authorized through the joint review board. If you only use one year, three years, there's no penalty for that. And on the debt, once we get to 2027, there's no prepayment penalty after that. You can pay it off in full or, or partial, starting on that date.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else have questions for Sean? If you have some later, you can always ask Jane and staff, and they can check with Sean. So refinancing one old debt, buying the land, extend it three years, hopefully pay it off one year into the extension.
Right, that's the hope.
That's kind of what Sean said.
You have listed under risk factors, GO with planned abatement.
Yep.
And do you guys have any kind of percentage that you attach as you run up these numbers of something like this occurring?
Where we wouldn't have enough TIP money?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, this discussion is exactly what we talked about today. The original pre-sale report, the draft one that we circulated at the end of last week. If you look at exhibit four, if everyone takes a quick look at that.
That's in your packet.
Yep. The one, the new one, if you look at that cumulative cash balance at the end of '21, it's 78,000. End of '22, it's 200,000. The first cut at this, we were pretty aggressive, and those numbers were down to like 14,000 left in the cash. And as I looked at it again, I thought, you know, because we got this prepayment date, let's, let's repay the debt a little bit slower, so we've got a little more capacity should something occur that skews the valuation numbers there a little bit. And our other, our other variable that we could adjust if we run into problems is you'll see the column, projected repayment of general fund advance at about 166,000 a year. If we ended up, where we had a situation that the TID values ended up going down, such that then the revenue of the TID went down, we could also repay that slower than we're showing here. Because of good financial planning from the council and staff in the past, your fund balance is pretty strong. It's solid. This money coming back, you want to get that back certainly. But if we had to delay it and get it back a little bit slower, it wouldn't hurt the city to do that. So that's where we thought, let's amortize the debt a little bit slower than originally thought for safety reasons. And then secondarily, if we ran into trouble before we'd ever go to the levy to cover the debt payments, we could also adjust this repayment to the general fund. So those were the variables that we were trying to put in place to manage the potential risk of ever having to levy for this debt in the future, and make sure that, as much as we can, that TID five is the funding source and not the, not the city's levy.
So you've kind of built a hedge into, into that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep. That's the plan.
Good question. Yes?
How would this work if we close? Aren't we planning to open a new TID?
Yeah. So the other possibility is if someone came in, and this is hypothetical, but if someone came in, a large business that wanted to do a major project on the newly acquired Sears property, and they wanted to locate there, but there would also be new infrastructure costs that would be necessary in, in order for them to do it, that would necessitate creating a new TID. So our, our thought is, what we could do if that happened, is we could say to the new business, what we need from you is to buy the land from the city, and that would give the city the proceeds to pay this debt. We, in turn, would say to this industry or business, we will give you a grant that matches maybe that price of the property, and we will charge that to the new TID rather than to the old. So there's a way we can shift this, so to speak, from a cost of this TID to the new TID. And why would we need to do that? Because we cannot create a new TID unless we really take out a lot of the property in TID five, because there's that 12% test that we're dealing with. So through discussions with staff, brainstorming, all of us, we've got a approach. Now it's just, if that opportunity comes about, we've got a, a pathway to get us to deal with the issue that you're bringing up.
Okay, thank you.
That would be a good problem to have.
Yeah. We know that when we talk to developers, that that's going to have to be, they're going to have to pay for land.
All right. Any other questions? Thoughts? All right. Thank you, Sean. What's our next step here then?
I think, mayor, just a motion to proceed with the debt issuance process and coming back at the meeting in July.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve, moving forward with this, how do we want to call it? Pre, it's not the pre-sale report, but the refinance?
I would, I would just, on the cover page, mayor, the proceed with the issuance of 4,465,000.
Oh, yep. That's, I guess that's what I was thinking. To me, I didn't know that too well. All right. So I'll entertain a motion to proceed with the...
So move.
Process.
Second.
Motion made second, approve the, to move forward with the process of the 4,465,000 taxable general obligation promissory note series 2021A financing. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Not all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
We don't need a roll call on that?
We will need roll call on the one in July.
When we finalize it.
Yeah. But this one, just a roll call, it's fine.
Good question. Good question. Thanks. All right. Thank you, Sean. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Next item on the agenda is approve, approve the replacement of existing central air system at Freedom Park at the cost of 20,200 with funds coming from reserves. In other words, the general fund reserves.
Correct. So if you recall, I did bring this to you guys because there's a, I think it's almost a 12-week lead time in order to get all of the materials that they need. So you guys kind of gave me the approval to at least go ahead and start the process.
Order it up.
Yeah. So now we needed the actual approval to have it come out of the reserves and move forward with it.
I'll make a motion to approve the replacement for the existing central air system at Freedom Park with the cost of 20,200.
Second.
Motion made second, approve...
Oh, with the funds coming from the reserve.
Yep. Thank you. Motion made second, approve, moving forward, the central air system replacement at Freedom Park in the amount of 20,200, the funds coming from the reserves. Is there any other discussion on the motion?
Do we have a timeline as to when they're going to start it?
It's a 12-week lead time.
Yeah.
As soon as they get the equipment, they'll probably have it on there.
Okay.
Any other questions? Not? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Line of commission meeting is, we have one on July?
Yes, six. It'll be Tuesday, July 6.
Okay.
And Bailey already told me she'll be at the meeting.
Okay. So is that the one item on there, or is there more than one?
I have a couple of items on there. And I already have items for the August one, too, so.
That's good. That means we're...
I'm telling you.
Things are functioning.
I'm calling busy.
Yeah. All right. Parks and public property, I think they had a meeting tonight, but there's nothing we need to take action on there at this point, right? We'll get the minutes and go from there.
Yeah.
Licensing. So this is, we got the approval of the Class B combination license for Prescott Grill LLC doing business with Two Rivers Bar and Grill. And then we have Melons Joint Inc. doing business with No Name Saloon. We have Schickling LLC doing business with Scabs' Place. These were held out last council meeting due to the fact that we were having some issues and problems with, you know, the rowdy patrons and, and managing them. And that was after, and, and we've had issues since that meeting that Dar talked about, where they were pretty much all present, and we were trying to explain what was going on. So as you can see, we did get a report from the chief of where a lot of our issues are coming from. And again, take into account, some of these could have started at one bar, or someone gets kicked out of one bar, goes down the street, starts a fight at another bar. However, bar owners still need to manage and maintain their patrons in their place, as well as outside their buildings, in I guess my opinion, as well as Dar's and probably everybody here. You know, the option we have, you know, again, can we shorten the hours? That's, that's an option. I know Dar happened to call and mention that to me. We did it during COVID because we had too many problems going until 2 o'clock. So we did go to midnight for a while there. It worked and helped. I think, and again, Jane, correct me if I'm wrong, we have the right to hold one back for whatever length of time we want.
You do. The only thing is you need to have a public hearing. So if you suspend a license or don't issue a license, you have to have a public hearing before, that bar owner has to come before the council and explain, you know, you need to explain what the, all of the issues are, and a letter would have to go out, and then...
And what the consequences are, maybe. We might as well even do that while we're at it.
Right. Yep.
So again, some of the consequences aren't suspended. Say, okay, you lose your license for one week. You lose it for two weeks. You lose it for a month. You know, if everybody seems to be having a problem downtown, maybe it's two o'clock closing, maybe it's one o'clock. Maybe it's midnight. So those are the options. And I guess I didn't know that they have to have hearings. So in other words, we have no reason to deny these tonight? Or we cannot deny them tonight?
It is your choice. I would highly recommend not doing it at this point in time.
So that's my point.
But this is like the point where you explain, you know, here are issues. Here's what we're going to start to do. We're going to take a look at, you know, your operators...
Even though we've done this before, I mean, what discussed was last time is if we get to this point in the end of June, and if things are still bad, and they're clearly still bad, you know, my opinion is I don't care where the fight is happening. I don't care where the drinking started.
It's still the public.
I don't care what, what, if you cannot take action either inside your property or outside of your property, I don't, it's your responsibility as a proprietor and, and as having a license holder. It's your responsibility. So if you just close the door and say, our bar is closed, so we, we don't know what happened. Or if your bartender leaves the establishment, goes down to the other bar and tells, you know, them to call 911, or tells the officer, it's not my job to call 911. You guys are supposed to be here when the bar is closed, which is what is, is in this report, that's a problem.
Yeah.
Well, it's not the case. They shouldn't need to be there. Things are...
And that's kind of, so that's kind of the thing that I brought up, is that I had a discussion earlier with Erica, and I basically asked them, like, is it truly our responsibility to make sure, like, right at bar close that we're there? Because we have other calls that we were on at the time. So there was another call at the time, so they were not down there.
Right. Yeah.
And so...
So do we go to our constituents and we raise their taxes so that we can have another police officer on on the weekends, cover fights outside of the bars?
And I feel like, so when, what week did we actually decide to close the stuff early? Was it New Year's Eve? It was the week before New Year's Eve?
Yeah, I think we extended it for New Year's, or we gave it till midnight on New Year's Eve at 1 o'clock, and then after that was midnight?
It was just that weekend? It wasn't for like a week or how many?
Oh, no, we...
No, we did for a couple months.
Yeah.
Because we still had them even during that time. There's one here. There's another one.
Well, there, this is for six months. And in June, there were nine police responses to Two Rivers, you know, so, and only one to Scabs in June. But the difference, Marine, and I, is that I feel like, I personally think that Scabs, or not Scabs, but Two Rivers and Melons have security. And I really encouraged the owner of Scabs, Al, to invest in some security, some sort of security. And the response was, our bartender is our security. I remember that. But I, but if we are, do we have more response to Rivers because they call the police and Scabs doesn't? It could be. I don't know. I mean, that we would have to ask.
Eric did bring that up. He said, you know, it's, it's that we're getting called to that, either in front of that specific address or whatever. And so it's hard to know. But just even reading the report of what happened to their bouncers, I'm kind of at a loss. Like, what the hell do you do? Like, it's getting to the point where it's getting so violent down there, I don't want to go down there. I wouldn't recommend anybody going down there weekend.
Can we tonight?
After nine, yeah.
One option is just close the bars sooner.
Yeah. Do we want to do that tonight?
Nope. I, well...
We need to, we need to put that out, that we're going to, we're going to approve your licenses. However, you know, if the, the fighting continues regardless of where it comes from and where it ends up, we're going to close the bars at midnight. That'll be the first step.
So now we have a holiday week coming up. I don't know what our coverage is for officers over the weekend.
We have one.
But that's a concern.
I think he's asking for additional overtime for once. We'd have three patrols.
Yeah, we'd be paying overtime. For, to secure their safety, but...
Yeah. So, I mean, if I'm being totally transparent, I'm a little worried about this weekend, just based on like, and there was one other case... So, I mean, if I'm being totally transparent, I'm a little worried about this weekend just based on like, and there was one other case that obviously we can't bring up here that was talked about, but it's upsetting. So.
Well, you have the right to say, maybe we taper it even back to 1 o'clock. Nothing says you can't do that.
I gotta say, like Muddy's does not say open until 2. When was the last time we had to have a call to Muddy's?
Right, that side of the, that side of the street.
Or Philander's, there's not calls at Philander's.
Well, that's what I'm saying though, they don't serve till 2:00 in the morning. Yeah, I don't even know when they close up, but I don't remember.
They probably tell 1:00 at Muddy's.
I don't.
Lucille's may be 10 or 11. It just depends on their crowd, but they usually shut down. Tommy, you had something to say earlier?
Yes, I believe that it's very important that we, we have an incremental system of knowing exactly if this, then this. And move forward through that rather than just a bandy about these either draconian or mild responses. And, and from, as I mentioned earlier, I had a discussion with Al Schickling and he does now have a doorman at his place. So he has moved forward on that issue. I believe also that we have to be very careful about issues that are occurring out on the street. Because, and then trying to assess blame on individual places and enacting penalties on those places. Because I believe that if we do that, we're inviting lawsuits. And yeah, we, you know, that would be up to the city to handle. But I think if we can reestablish trust with the bar owners downtown, we can move forward in a positive.
It's really, I mean, I'm hearing the trusting. It's hard though, when we keep seeing this consistency over and over and over. And the one I can't talk about is, is upsetting, like what's happening. So I don't know, and that's kind of where I'm at, is like, I don't know what path forward we really should. I feel like we've had a lot of great discussions with these guys and we brought the person in. So what is the next step? Well, security cameras I think would be a great option for us if we, if we need to monitor and observe of what's happening on our public property. Because that sidewalk is public property and where people are coming out of. To really understand what's happening for root cause analysis, figure out what is the problem. Because right now, I mean, to Tom's point, we don't know where they're coming from, but that's an easy fix. Cameras are cheap.
Go back to that trust issue. I would like to know where that information comes from. You know, Tom, who's telling you that the bar owners don't trust the police?
Well, the fact that they're not making 911 calls and the fact that they're not no longer sharing their video evidence with the police department.
When did that happen? Just recently or?
There was a situation where the police requested a film from the No Name Saloon. They gave that, they gave that video evidence to the police. The police then used that, saw something on that video evidence and they used that to charge the bouncer from the No Name Saloon with felony assault.
Unrightfully so.
Correct. Well, I don't know. I haven't seen that video.
They wrote the ticket. I'm assuming they felt it was legitimate. They don't just do it. And so the trust is, oh, you busted one of our bouncers who should have been busted, now we don't trust you.
Well, what?
You know, I mean, there's that fine line of trust. I know what you're saying, but they got to understand that we're here to protect the community, not their employees necessarily, it's the community.
All, all parties have different perceptions in disputes.
Oh yeah, and that's where, that's why I say they don't trust us because they busted one of their guys because in their opinion, the police's opinion, he did not, he didn't treat the guy very well.
On our behalf, we have not, on numerous occasions and tried to have very open, calm discussions, you know, and that hours long. So I lose trust in them as well when I see that they're not trying to work together with us. We try to work together with them, what's going on the inside of their buildings. They need to work with us to try to solve some of these issues on the outside of the buildings too.
And to not call 911 when someone is physically being beaten outside of your bar is completely negligent.
So, I mean, we can talk about this. So here's my thought. Listen to everybody so far. I agree, you know, the trust. You know, you'd have to talk with Eric, did he use it completely or do they have other evidence besides the video to charge this guy? As far as security cameras, I think Dar happened to talk to me earlier today too and Bailey brought it up, maybe the city invests in security cameras for Main Street. Put them up on the poles. Because again, like you say, Tom, how did they start at Two Rivers or here or there and they end up in some, at least we'd see where these people are coming from when it happens.
I think that would be more, I think that would be appropriate and to have it on the backside, also facing the backside of the bar.
And you, well, yeah, anywhere where we feel necessary and I think we put signs down on Main Street. Put the signs down on Main Street. Security cameras are watching or whatever it takes to get people to understand, can't do what you want. So, security cameras, and again, where's that money coming from, but maybe we find it. If it's reserves, whatever, we think it's important. I think the council tonight should say, let's figure out how to get a video camera on Main Street. No, no, what I'm saying, I just think we do it.
You know, I've been on the council for two terms and a half, a term, and we have never had this problem previously. This is a new problem for our city. It happened occasionally, but not this frequently.
I think part of it is COVID bringing them across the river. When they were shot on the other side of the river, people realized Prescott's a pretty cool place to hang out. You know, so that's part of it. And part of it is, the new bar probably is advertised more and we're getting more people, just word of mouth. So I think security cameras, if we have to tonight, we could say, let's plan on doing that, number one. Number two, another thought, because we should bring them in, like Jane says before, because I know Tom like say, they could sue, but I think you bring them in, the three or whatever. If we want to take the three, however number you want, or maybe all of them, bring them in and say, here's, here's what's going on everybody. We need you to help police your patrons.
We did that, Mayor, though.
No, no, but, but they sign an agreement, or Dar. We're going to put, here's what you guys understand. These are the things you agree to do.
These are the repercussions.
Call and if, yeah, and if everybody signs saying, guess what, if, and if it's not just one bar, it looks like it's coming from everywhere, we're changing the hours. If we find out it's just your bar, maybe your first offense, if we decide that you're having too many fights, you close for a whole week. Then maybe your second offense, it's a month. And, you know, so they, they sign saying, they understand that.
Like I said, it's not the fights, it's what's happening before and after the fights. It's how people are dealing with the fights. It's how.
But the cameras and everything, we, I still think you somehow write that up in agreement. If we find out that your bouncers were part of the problem, okay, then, then that's, that's an issue. I mean, I don't think you can spell everything out, but we can play that, we can weave through that. And I think if, if we get them in and they actually sign kind of our agreement, here's their conditions, here's what we're looking for you to do and here's what happens if you don't follow them. They signed it, they kind of agreed to it.
I don't know if that's legal.
I was going to just ask that.
Maybe we should check that out. I don't think it might be legal.
But, and what if they don't sign it?
Yeah, right.
Fine, then I guess what? We'll still change it to mid, we can change the hours to midnight then. That's easy. They don't want to work with us, you can cut their hours. I mean, there's nothing says we can't say 10 o'clock's closed.
Right, I think we can ask for their cooperation for sure.
I still think you put something in writing, even if they don't agree to it. They can say, I don't agree to it, but I did get this given to me.
Well, there is the license law, so I don't know how that adds on. I'm just saying from like a perspective.
Right, what right do we have per state statute to pollize?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But we find out what it is and let's put it in that document.
Yeah, I mean, it's spelled out. They, here's the tough part, and he said that when he was here from the state. This is their living.
Yeah.
So why are they not protecting, you know, their making of their living? Why are they not kicking these people who are drunk out? So the one weekend after, the first weekend after we had the gentleman here from the state, it worked perfect. There was one gentleman who went to every one of the bars and tried to get in every one of the bars and they denied him. And he got disorderly, they called, and he got picked up for disorderly conduct right out on the street. Every bar denied him. And how the gentleman from the state described it to us is, they go to one bar, they get kicked out of there. But they go to the next bar, that next bar serves them. And then they think they've had enough and so then they take them to the next bar, the next bar won't let them in, they go across the street, they get served again, you know, and that's, that's the tough part. And do you think there was some trust that was lost the night when the state was here? The gentleman from the state was here and we questioned a lot of things that were happening and they didn't want to be questioned. The bar owners didn't want to be questioned. We got told, we'll handle what's going on.
I will tell you, because I did serve all through college, I will tell you that there were instances where I would be serving somebody and then I knew it was time to cut them off. And I was scared to cut them off. So if I didn't have anybody, another bartender to back me up to say like, can you help me get this person out? You kind of don't know what to do because you're like.
That's ownership. That's bad ownership.
That's what I'm saying. But that was at a nightclub downtown, but what I'm saying though, we're talking about this incident that happened on Friday. I don't know what happened or transpired, but I can tell you the person that I saw on the video was a bruiser, like big guy. And if I was a female working behind a bar trying to kick that person out by myself.
Ownership has to be prepared to handle those situations.
I'm just giving the example because of what happened on Friday.
And the state person did say.
Of why we need bouncers down here.
The state person did emphasize that the bar owner is responsible for over-serving.
And to Maureen's point here, I think, you know, this wasn't an issue. Yes, COVID has come in, but the other factor that I'm seeing here is the new guy on the block. Who when you look at this has overall, the more than double everybody else, almost triple. Two Rivers is, if they had two more, they'd be triple Scabs. In the last month, they have more than anybody else.
They have nine.
Now, these are incidents that are happening with their situation. I would be willing to bet that the over-serving that they're doing, that's not getting reported there, that's pouring itself down the street and walking into other places is instigating that same type of thing. And although I know, I kind of agree that certain people who were here, who were at, at least active in the conversation. As opposed to the folks I'm talking about who just sat there the whole time and didn't say a word, one word. At least Scabs and the other folks back there in the corner maybe didn't like the conversation, but they were at least active in it. Two Rivers came here and didn't say a word. And since then, they haven't done any.
No, they did.
They were at the end of the meeting.
At the end.
You know, I did have to leave after an hour and a half. After an hour and a half, I had to leave.
They didn't say anything during, I don't think they did.
They sat and took everything that was thrown at them.
And then at the end, they tried to.
At the end, they, they offered walkie-talkies.
Whatever they offered, since then, they haven't fixed the problem. Because if you look in the last, if you look in the last month, their numbers are still excessive to everybody else.
But that's because maybe that they're calling.
Right, they're not afraid to call.
And the other bars aren't calling.
That could be.
And that is something that Erica.
Because, you know, to Bailey's point too, a bartender has the right to call the police and say, we have a customer that will not leave. Ask them nicely, they don't leave, can you please assist us? And I'm sure, I'm sure the opposite, well, they just come and say, no, you're, you're asked to leave, not trespass, but you are, it's time to go, you're done. Police would help, you know, it goes both ways. We'll help them, they help us. I think that's.
And I do believe there was a little bit of miscommunication when we were talking about the call to the police and that we would be keeping track of them, keeping track of them. We're keeping, we're keeping track of where the bar fights are taking place, but not in regards to that it could go against them. We're just keeping track of where, because it's impossible to say where these people were even over-served and why.
And they could have just wandered up from a boat.
Correct.
Yeah, exactly.
My opinion, the problem drinkers are an omnivorous bunch. They move about freely within the ecosystem of the bar environment in downtown Prescott. So, trying to nail down one particular place.
And I think the biggest thing is they're getting so big. It's not one person or two people fighting. It's got to be people that fight.
It was like so many.
Eight, 10 people fighting.
Women.
And it's women. Yeah, women do.
Women were fighting, men are fighting. I was like, what in God's name is going on here?
So.
I don't know.
I think, you know, security cameras, if we want, we should talk about getting that started tonight.
Absolutely.
I think it's awesome.
ASAP, actually.
Calling more people to Ellsworth.
But you can't with only two officers on duty. It's impossible.
So if you think about that too though, so let's say we take, let's say there's a fight that breaks out and they have to take that person to jail. You do not have an officer in that area for how, how long, like an hour?
Couple hours.
Unless you have the county to come and sit on the edge, they might.
And Nancy has come to help and has tried to back up, but she's also feeling for Ellsworth who's down and then one other town, Spring, Spring something. Spring Valley is also down. So they have asked for county help and.
And county was here.
Yes.
Because they were dealing with another problem.
Yes.
You know, so.
Everyone's trying to help with it, but at the same time, it's like, it's technically.
So do we look at this as almost an emergency situation where we have to? Because what's happening too is because our bars are open longer downtown, people are coming over because hey, we get an extra hour in down in Prescott to drink.
Is Minnesota one?
Well, I believe so.
No, you're not.
We're 2:30 on weekends.
Okay, so it's, we're later than Minnesota, correct?
Minnesota closes at 2:00 in the morning now.
So.
Either way, I, I don't know.
I'm worried about this weekend though. I don't even know if three officers is going to be enough.
Well, I think if everyone's okay, I think Eric would like to have a little overtime and a couple extra officers. So you know, he might, he might push out a little, hopefully he can find in his budget. If not, he might ask for a little extra cash down the line.
If something changes or people get sick or whatever, we'll have to figure that out. I mean.
But he's short two.
Yeah, I know, he's short a couple. That's why he has to, that's why he has to get overtime because he's short officers.
And I can tell you right now, he's a lot of applications.
He'll be using overtime. I think we're going to do security cameras, we'll make a motion yet. If we approve these, do you think you want to shorten the hours or do you say leave it go, but maybe, I don't know how we notify them between now and the weekend, which I suppose you can do that Jane, can't you? We have emails for all of them?
Well, all the licenses have to go out.
But do they have emails for all of them? I'm asking, do they have license?
June 30th, so yeah. So I can, I mean, I can put something in every license because I haven't mailed them out yet. So I have every envelope ready to go to every establishment in the city of Prescott.
Maybe we should write a letter telling them what we've, what.
That's what I'm trying to think.
Like that sequence, what is that?
That's why I was wanting email.
And that's, and that's, yeah, that's the tough part of it.
If nothing else in the letter, you could say the council has talked about pulling licenses if we seem, if, if there's problems down there or at least suspending it for a short period of time.
A public hearing with license suspension.
Or shorten the hours.
Or I would put shorten the hours first.
Penalties, I think you need to, some of those bartenders need to be cited if there's something that you can put back to a bartender.
I, we talked about that today.
About that one this weekend.
The one this weekend really is kind of obscene to me. Like if someone is getting brutalized outside of your bar, please call 911.
If she's not on duty, what do you do? I don't know if she was, but.
I think the doors supposedly were closed at that time.
Bar was already shut down.
I didn't, I didn't look at the time.
That's a problem with that one.
We don't know a time limit.
That's, that's a tough one.
But you had time to run to the bar next door.
Well, and my question is, okay, was it after the bar closed or before the bar closed and who was manning the bar? If you're running down the street, I would assume the bar was closed and the door was closed.
Well, I think.
We're doing a lot of speculating.
Yeah. A lot of speculation.
Someone who was part, saw the fight, ran back down. If you, if you read it, it appears like that Two Rivers got wind that there was a fight going on in front of Scabs. So the one gentleman was called up from Boat Drinks to help secure the front of the building for Two Rivers. And as this fight was going on down there, someone who was part of that fight or was watching it came down to Two Rivers. Yep, and then they followed them down and the bar, the security down at Two Rivers got knocked out.
Who took the video that we saw?
I believe it came from.
Innocent bystander.
Oh, yeah. But then to also get that other picture of somebody who.
Laying flat on the ground.
Laying flat on the ground just because they had gotten so drunk.
I don't know how many of you were here when we changed the hours for COVID, but let me tell you what. They were all whining big time, this was our livelihood, blah, blah, blah. Well, you know what? That'll straighten them up. shorten the hours back is probably going to be the biggest impact.
But will they stand outside and fight? I mean, will they stand outside at midnight and kind of, you know?
Can you clarify something for me? I was under the impression when we changed the hours for COVID, that that was under the COVID emergency protocol that we were operating under. That the, the hours of operation as by statute state are the hours of operation.
No.
No. US municipality have the right to set the hours.
And Hudson had changed theirs because they were having issues. So then we talked, and we were starting to have them too, we thought, we don't have to float out here.
It was during that protest time.
Yeah, that's right. Well, I don't, oh, that's this weekend, isn't it?
The 4th?
Yeah.
Now, we could debate this all, all day long.
Let's just decide what we're going to do.
What do we want to do for the 4th? He's got three. What do we want to do for the fourth? He's got three officers that are going to be on. Do we feel like staying open till 2:30 is-
Excessive.
Yep, for this weekend, knowing the amount of issues that we're having.
Be able to enforce that in less than a week?
I don't know. That's what I don't know.
You know, I mean-
That's where if we had emails for every agent of every bar, if we had emails, they would know tomorrow.
I'd be happy to deliver a letter.
No, but if we have emails for all of them, they've been notified.
Well, not really.
Do any of them have any shindings going on till whatever? They only can have a ban till midnight, right?
Right.
For the amplifier permit.
And you know what? The officers are going to be busy, uh-
Fireworks.
Fireworks.
Well, everything this weekend probably.
Fireworks. It's a bigger deal than just-
Bars. And it's not, it's going to continue on. I mean, it's not just this weekend.
And he's, I know.
Eric's just beside himself. He doesn't know what to do.
Well, the thing that struck me from the videos I saw was the bystanders were almost treating it like an entertainment.
Major.
Oh yeah, they're ragging some of them on.
That's true.
So they probably had enough to drink to say, hey, this is cheap entertainment. Let's get these people to beat the daylight action.
Why if someone's head pounces on the-
Again, if we have emails for all the, all the bars and you, everyone feels that strong about what could happen this weekend and we're short-staffed, even though Eric will do his best to put overtime and a third officer or car on the street.
We would not have a problem following and then reducing hours.
We could, we could go, well, we go to one this weekend.
I'm okay with going to one o'clock.
I am too.
Pull it, so then from one to one, Friday through Monday, or just change the hours to one?
Change the hours to one for right now.
Permanently.
It would be an ordinance change. You'd have to change our ordinances is what you have to do, but you could add a directive from the council.
At this point, we could make a short term.
It's more of like an emergency thing until we get this under control.
Right.
Yeah.
So-
So until we meet with, so until we meet with bar owners.
I didn't, I know that's what you said, is that-
I make a motion to change the hours for bar closing to one o'clock in the morning.
Effective-
Immediately, as soon as we can.
Tomorrow.
Notify.
Yeah, tomorrow.
I'll second it.
Upon notification, is it the three days? Three-day notification like the paper would be? Okay.
No.
So effective, you know, tomorrow. Okay, I got a motion made and seconded to change the bar closing hours for the city of Prescott, effective tomorrow, to one o'clock AM. Is there any discussion on the motion?
How long will that be? Or, because we can't make a permanent change until we do the ordinance committee. So as long as the chief says there's an emergency situation down there that we can normally handle.
As long as we feel it's an emergency situation, because we have the authority to make that change.
Yeah.
So if you want to say for the next month until we either make an ordinance change or-
Meet with them.
I would say meet with them. I would say tentatively 30 days until an agreement is decided upon with the-
And or, and or you see improvement downtown. If fights still start at one, you can always move to midnight. I mean, or, you know, so it goes both ways. Does that make sense? So the motion is just the one o'clock. It's, and I think we change its effective tomorrow, 30 days or until we meet, make an agreement. Does that sound reasonable? That motion makes sense, Jean? You can kind of make it up as you go, but you understand where we're all coming from. Okay, any other discussion? Any other thoughts or opinions on this one o'clock?
I'd also like to make the recommendation to get security cameras.
Let's finish this motion first, and then we'll do the other one. So any other discussion on the motion?
I just, I, I personally think this is a little draconian and a little last minute. And, uh, I would, I would counsel- I would counsel against this at this time.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other thoughts, opinions?
Well, we've had plenty, they've had opportunities to correct us.
That's fine. Everyone has their opinions and that's good. That's why we have six of us, plus me. So if there's another discussion, all in favor of the one o'clock effective for 30 days, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Okay, now the next one would be recommendation for security cameras and Eric to be able to have additional officers, in my opinion.
I make a motion that we buy as many security cameras as Eric wants, both in the back of businesses and on the main street.
Wherever they've had their incidents.
Yes, and, um, and that Eric be able to use overtime to keep things under control this weekend.
I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made second to get the security cameras on Main Street and behind the buildings wherever we feel, wherever we feel it's necessary. And that we also are approving that the police have overtime for this weekend.
And maybe put a park, another camera up in the parking lot.
Yeah, well, that's anywhere where they have some issues.
Yeah.
I got it.
Yeah, I just kind of, downtown area.
Yeah, downtown area.
Yep.
I did see, yeah. Okay, uh, any other discussion on the motion?
Yeah.
Yes.
We're going to need to get bids. Can't just willy-nilly buy cameras.
So they're not going to be in place.
We need to look into how the information is retrieved via Bluetooth or-
Stored.
Whatever. Otherwise, they tape over top of each other.
So it'll be to get a quote then, um, or to get an idea of what we need and then put it out for order, whatever the dollar mark is.
We've, we've done some of this legwork already because we looked at it for the beach and for the boat launch. So we've got some of the legwork done already with all of this.
Not just bring the bid in or, you want to give them, well, I suppose because of the dollar mark, I mean, bring them in, we'll approve the bid, but go ahead and start the process.
And, um, and also is there a state regulation related to how long archived footage has to be retained?
Only if it's evidence, I think.
Yeah, retention policy.
Our policy might be 30 days, but it's, I'm sure for evidence.
Probably, I would think is something to the effect of making public notice that we're doing such a thing. As long as it's quality that will be-
I agree.
Signing.
We're doing public notice right now.
With public notice.
But I mean-
Oh, yeah, that's true. So, so part of when we do put the cameras up, there will be signs on main streets and surveillance, somehow whatever, for that privacy thing that we cover.
Absolutely.
All right. So any other discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of the security, move forward with security and overtime, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everybody. Now, we still got these three licenses that need to be approved. Again, I think we're approving it at this time and maybe if we need to, when we meet with them about the hour, we'll have some other discussion.
Make a motion to approve the SP combination license for Two Rivers, Melons Joints and Scabs.
Second.
Motion made. And second, approve Prescott Grill, Melons Joint and Chicklings LLC. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Ordinance committee, is there anything we need to get together on that right now?
Didn't we have one discussion going on? Yeah, I think we do. On the 13th or something?
Yes.
Moved it. All right, so anyhow, there's one coming up.
There's one coming up.
But we had to get together as to-
We'll post it on the next council meeting. Might be that night though, I suppose. Uh, health and safety, anything there right now?
Doesn't appear to be anything back on either. Like I said, I read through minutes and everything seems to be buttoned up, so.
Good. All right. Public Works, approval for purchase of rail for the main lift station. Robert, you want to present that one since I think you're in charge of public work?
Yep. Um, the rails are fully proven for pulling it up out of the ground.
Okay.
And he said they're all rusted and everything and they have to like really work at getting them pulled up. So it really needs to be done. It's a safety factor and, uh, other issues too. But it's in the amount of $7,880.
And that'll come out of like our depreciation capital fund, replacement fund?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions?
Main lift station, I'm sorry.
That's done by the boat launch, right?
That's the great big one.
Big concrete, okay.
It was galvanized and it basically corroded and broke.
Yeah, that's another thing. He said they're getting them made out of stainless, I believe.
Yeah, that's what he said.
So it'll last a lot longer.
I make a motion to approve the purchase of the rails for the main lift station.
Second.
Motion made second, approve the, approval of purchase of the rails for the main lift station in the amount of $7,880. Is there any other discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Update on the downtown parking lot. Is that you also, Robert, or is it Jean?
I think that's going to have to be Jean.
Well, I, I think it's just, um-
Let us know it's-
Right. It, I think you guys have seen most of it. Um, you know, everything has been striped now and the lower portion has been paved. So now they're working on the upper portion. They put in those walls in there, um, and they're going to work on getting that paved within the next, I don't know, couple of weeks down there. So it has added some additional parking for down there. One of the things, and this will just come up as part of it, uh, Todd Langefelt was in and asked about, you know, wanting to have special assessments paid for him to be able to pave his area. This was not a project that we did bidding on. This was a project that was done by our public works department. And so there was no way to be able to do a special assessment. We didn't have any of that. And also in our ordinances, special assessments require that you pay an interest rate. So, but that was just one of the things he had wanted.
Are we going to try to put phase two in that parking lot area too?
Well-
That next level up?
See, he wants to wait till 2022.
Yeah, that's fine.
Kind of just get that settled down a little bit, see where we're at with it and then work on-
It's definitely been used and works. And at some point, maybe we do charge for it down the line, but maybe we won't launch.
We, we've gotten some quotes and stuff. It's, yeah.
Will it pay for it's off the charging?
Hmm, we don't think so.
Okay, that's-
We should take a look at that because then we can also see for maybe Main Street.
Yeah, we looked at it. We looked at it.
For Main Street and that parking lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, um, other places pulled out their parking meters.
Yeah, it's-
Which place?
Because it's more, you have to hire someone to, to process all of that.
Enforce it, that's the problem.
Enforce it, yeah.
That's what you're not going to make. You can make money if-
I still want to look at the numbers.
Yeah, Beth's going to put the stuff together.
Yeah.
She's been here, worked at, looked at the downtown area, just the parking lot itself and-
The only thing I was thinking is I don't know if we want to put even just like a temporary sign for people on motorcycles. It's new asphalt and on a hot day, they're going to go in.
Already we've got holes in them.
Yeah.
Kickstands.
Yeah, kickstands. So recommendation of pucks for anybody that wants to park in there with a motorcycle, use a puck.
Just bring your puck?
Yeah, but yeah, we're going to have holes everywhere. I would maybe put a warning sign up like, maybe don't park.
I think he has that for no motorcycle parking. Like I ordered that one.
If it tips over because they put it in the soft asphalt?
Yeah, it's just a pain to go in.
It's well-
It's just a pain to patch them.
I don't know exactly what you're saying.
We've got that already.
Yeah.
All right. So anyhow, that's the update. The, the crew did a great job and they had Andy paint it, so it's good. Personnel, I think we got a meeting tomorrow for personnel.
Right, 5:30?
Yep, and, uh, we'll bring, we'll talk about that at that time and bring it back to council. Now we are to, uh, communications. Public comments. Anybody in the audience that would like to figure out the council on anything, it's public comment, no discussion. State your name, your address, and then tell us your comments.
Uh, Michael Kosmalski, um, in, hold on, I just moved, 5819 to 42nd Street, Oak Grove Township. Came to the council tonight because I wanted to share a positive experience, uh, between the Prescott School District and our SRO, SRO Officer Chris Stewart and a partnership with the Pierce County Sheriff's Department and Officer Coranda. So part of my duties at the school district, I'm summer school principal and coordinator. And one of the great partnerships we had was between Officer Coranda, um, myself and Chris Stewart. And we offered a two-week, um, one-hour-a-day course to our middle school students on common sense criminal justice. I also had a student, um, my son took the class as well. And just what a positive experience it was for the kiddos. I participated in a lot of the activities. So they got to learn about how do the police department and law enforcement, um, help our community and all the different services that they provide, um, which I don't think oftentimes we hear about. And then they had some sort of, what are the tools in their tool belt that they can use? Where are some other resources? Um, but then also the kids got to experience a lot of hands-on things. So they got to look at the equipment, put on some of the equipment that officers carry around. We had a mock, uh, pull-over. So they got to experience it both from in the dare vehicle, what does the officer see? And then they sat in my car and they got to see, you know, look in the, in the mirrors. How does it look when there's a squad car with lights on behind you? So that way it's not the first time they're seeing it is when they're getting pulled over. And then conversation about what do you do when you get pulled over? And what's your responsibility, your behaviors and things like that? But I did send a letter to both Sheriff Hove and Chief Michaels. I just wanted to read. I want to express our appreciation for both the Pierce County Sheriff's Office and the Prescott Police Department for the continued support of the Prescott School Community during our June summer school programming. Officer Chad Coranda and Officer Chris Stewart provide a unique learning opportunity for our students. These officers co-planned and co-taught Common Sense Criminal Justice course for middle school students. Students learn to array about the area of services law enforcement provides our community as well as the tools that they have to assist in keeping our community safe. As a parent of one of the students in the class, I can say without a doubt that this class has made a lasting impression on our students and helped build a positive experience and connection between our students and the law enforcement community. On behalf of the Prescott School District, thank you and thank you to the council for supporting our officers and sharing, and their sharing of their times and talents with our community. Our community is fortunate to have the support and talented officers of Coranda and Stewart and that are willing to go the extra mile to build a better community together. So thank you to the council as well for supporting the SRO officer in our schools.
Thank you for waiting for us. I love it.
I taught a class in juvenile law when I was a classroom teacher. And, um, I had borrowed the books from the State Department of Education in Minnesota. And at the end of the class, almost all of the books were stolen.
Well, our students could solve that because the, the last day, um, they did some fingerprinting and things like that and dusting. But then the last day, they actually did a, they had a mock crime scene and they had to collect evidence. So they had evidence bags and, and those sort of things. So it was a really good hands-on experience and positive relationship. Six through eighth.
Oh, that's a good time.
My sister was eight and I kept getting pictures.
That's impressive though. I think that's something that's very unique.
Very good.
I think also parts of those things you sort of wish they would incorporate in school. Just, you know, what is, what is law enforcement about? What happens if you do get pulled over? What happens? You know, why, you know, why do, what happens when they write you a ticket? Or what is your responsibility? Uh, yeah, we all know, same. We all have to learn the hard way. We try to, you know, ease burdens for them a little bit. I wish it was going that fast. Things, but some of us learn the hard way. Maybe if we have these discussions ahead of time, we might think a little bit.
As I told the officers, I think, um, it probably is their best recruiting tool as well.
Yeah, I think so too. No, I definitely believe in recruiting as well. Inspiration, I love it.
Thank you from the councilman, Mike Kosmalski.
Thank you.
One time too.
All right, any other public comments?
Um, I'm just going to give you guys a heads up. You've seen some of the stuff going on with the water tower. So the water tower, I think we're starting probably middle of July. We have really been going through the water. Um, the water tower's running like sometimes 20 hours a day. And if we take that offline, we may have to look at, um, maybe doing a little bit with the water conservation.
No sprinkling?